We're gonna call meeting to work at 6:32. And I'm gonna say, thank you, welcome everybody for coming. Just before we get started, I want to just say, we've got a lot to do, not really a lot to do, only one real decision. But a lot to talk about. But also, we have Board of Finance Budget Workshop at 7:00 that we should be at, we're getting very close. We're getting very close, so I'd like to, whatever we're at, wherever we're at, it gets to be 6:58, I'd like to table what we're doing and pick it up. Depends where we're at. So the first item on the agenda is to approve minutes from regular meeting held on March 22nd, 2022, and to special joint, special meeting held on March 31st.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March 22nd, 2022, and the joint special meeting held on March 31st, 2022.
All those in favor? Okay, audience of citizens, some citizens here? Yeah, we'll see, I'm not sure if you're speaking about Plan Conservation and Development. Well, we'll, we'll have to talk with them about that, we've got nothing so far. We do have a Plan Conservation, Station and Development, Plan of Conservation and Development. A proposal in front of us, and in front of the Board of Finance, for this two-year project. And there is a professional, the people that we have already hired here, type PR consulting, are planning on performing that task, so it might be the same thing. And that's, that's really more what planning and zoning is about, is planning for our development, not so much planning for our promotion. But that's a good, to be thought. Well, yeah, everything, everything is tied in a little bit, so, thank you for that. No, they're, they're actually, like, the request that we have in front of us now is to look for money to be put in the budget. If we can use, if we can use COVID money, ARPA money for that, to supplement some of that, we will, but right now it's sitting in our budget, our proposed budget. Anybody else?
Well, most of the town, so, I'm trying to tell that there is, I think about two months ago, I understand, a shooting range was put in at the dock. For using just the constables. One, I wanna know when that use of town land was put to the town. And two, I've heard environmental science, and environmental forces are pressing in, and I look at the legislature, there's huge regulations about let abatement. And I wanna know what's been done about maybe let abatement, and if you do not have a plan that passes DEEP, I mean, tend to go far. There's water down here.
There's all kinds of things, stuff.
And there are woods on both sides. And I think that the constables who want to practice, I think that's a good idea. There are many, many old and outlawed shooting ranges that are within an easy drive, where the let abatement is already taken care of. And I think it should, quite a lot, there's water down there. It's going to reach into that, and I don't think there's anything you can do. So, get up, hold it. That is going to make that a viable thing.
Thank you.
Have you done, you know, have let abatement here?
We do things about abatement of everything down there, all the time, working with DEEP every year, we have inspections down there and studies constantly. Four times a year, someone comes in and tests all the water, and everything that we're supposed to be doing. I have no idea what they know or they don't know, the shooting range was just installed this past winter. As far as I know, all of the necessary precautions and conversations were had with DEEP, but I don't know that for certain.
Was the town ever asked about that?
The town has not asked about it.
It's town property.
Correct. Because the town wasn't asked, I'm not sure that needed to be asked about, something like that for police training. I understand that, thank you. I understand what you think. I think that you should, that's where you, that's where you wanna be, that's where you should be. I think that, I personally think that if you had a concern and you heard about it, it would have been appropriate to come to my office and sort of talk about it, and it could have worked through. This is perfectly fine, but you do what you need to do, not to ask you not to do any. We can look at how this is happening, how much it's used, and then we'll talk to DEEP ourselves and make sure that we're not doing something. I mean, we've talked to them, but I will certainly follow up, but we talk to them all the time about what's going on up here. Okay, thank you.
I'll keep short, and you guys are busy tonight. There's not, it's formal, about the 100 business dry roti. And I just love that it's lucky now that I can put in an email offer for your review. And for their, you know, I don't know, we decided, you guys are busy, but we're going on special meeting, and it's for conversation for the preschool admin, and I know you guys are busy tonight, but I figured I could talk, so, the email, maybe this is where.
Yeah, I received it today. Yeah, I imagine Nick, this will be a part of a larger discussions, I told him earlier, we had a, you've already had a run of property, a year ago. The, the conversation has to, that has to take place, has to take place around how we wanna proceed with that property, in, in, and down two different avenues. Sell it and be done with it, just, just sell it for profit, or sell it in a, in a manner that it was laid out for, which is really as, as Nick described it a couple of weeks ago, as a space, or kind of a game invader project, not for someone who's just starting out, but some, maybe needs, needs some space to expand, and to, and to give some assistance to that. That's how it was laid out before, and we can distribute to you guys all of that information as well. But it's, it's a bigger conversation that really shouldn't be made just by us, it's something that we should talk about for an extended period, about how we wanna proceed with that, that way.
I think it's, you should be, I would prefer to change our process, you know, to, to, to all together.
Yeah. Yeah, I think there are lots of, lots of different ways to spend, how we can spend the money, and always use money and sols. Appreciate it. The next item on the agenda is, or is there anyone else or anything else?
That's a one quick question. Um, if, this does come up for sale, because now you're saying there was two offers, there's no need for real estate agents and stuff like that, correct?
I don't know.
Give up a 6%, 3%, whatever, this makes sense.
Yep, I don't know how that works, that'll, that'll be for the lawyers to figure out.
Because the other, the other part.
Yeah, they were, they were.
How was the real estate when there was no income? That's how weird.
I was, I was on the Board of Select at the time, and I'm confident that that one, that was listed through real estate, and, and listed through the news media and all that kind of stuff, so. Okay, the next item on the agenda is appointments, we have Planning and Zoning Commission. Two names up here, Alexander Strobel is, we're currently an alternate member, appointed about a year ago. And our normal process is anyone who is an alternate, they can see on regular members, move them up. Alexander is, is ready to come up, and that will be left in motion here. Next is Fred Jordan, he came in last couple of weeks ago, sent a letter a couple of weeks ago, and had a bunch of endorsements a couple of weeks ago, and Fred is here tonight, but he would take over one of the alternate number plates.
I had a very good conversation yesterday with Fred. I've, I've, whatever, very good conversation. The only question I have is the, the Alexander. His, his tongue expires so quick.
That means the, the regular membership that he goes into expires, yeah. And that's just a matter of time, when the PNC was set up, certain members, certain members had a, you know, they staggered the expiration, so that over time, as it continued, there would, there would never be a mass.
Right, I understand how that is.
Yeah, well, that's the vacancy that's, vacancy that's there, you wouldn't think so, that's where the vacancy is. Because it goes with the position now.
I don't know what Jim has to say, but I, I don't wanna make a decision tonight, I'd like to have another week. That, like I said, Fred and I had a very good conversation, I wanna do one more thing, just my own doing. Or whatever you guys want, if you guys want.
I'll leave it to you guys, table that one.
Yeah, I had, I had a great conversation with Fred also, it was, had to be 30, 40, 45 minutes, you know, done. Yeah, we did, and I expressed my, my views and your views, and it was, it was a, it was a good productive conversation. You know, I'm, I'm willing to, to vote tonight, but if, if Dwayne says some questions, I don't know, I don't believe that it would hurt to let you pursue and talk and do what you wanna do, I don't have any problem with that.
Do we need, do we need to move tonight? I mean, because again, I'm, I'm 90% where I wanna be, I believe, I just wanna talk to one more person.
Yep. You know, we have another meeting on the 26th, I think PNC has a meeting, the third, Thursday, so that will overlap, but there's not, I don't know that there's anything of any urgency, and Fred can certainly attend that meeting, just as a, as a member of the public, so, you can get him. And actually, he's, he's gotta go to the town meeting anyway to get the appointment to be confirmed, so.
Next question, so the, the guy that we're moving from alternate to regular, does that, for Tom? So what's our schedule look like to, to, no sense in having two separate town meetings?
No, no, I, I suggest that if we're going to table, that we table both.
Another town meeting, something else coming up?
The next town meeting, yeah, we'll talk about that a little bit, the next item, but the next time a meeting that we have scheduled is the annual town. And I would, I'd prefer to leave that on its own, that's a big night, it's a lot of information. For appointments, we can schedule, we're gonna have to have another town meeting, I think CHC has got a vacancy that we're looking at someone to fill. We can schedule a special town meeting, I just prefer to, to not get in the way of the, of the budget, so we can, we can schedule around that, either at the, a month from now, and have a, a town meeting scheduled for immediately following, or select, and take care of appointments. You know, not two weeks, not, not on the 26th. We can, we can deal with this on the 26th, but we can schedule a town meeting once we've done this, appointment, and then that can be for a couple of weeks following.
Okay, that's, that's fine, like I said, if Dwayne has other things that must have all, that's fine, I have no problem with that, rather have him on board one way or the other.
Is that I'm 90% by just the one one?
Yeah. Okay, great, so let's get a motion to table till our next, next scheduled meeting.
Make a motion that we table the, the appointments listed, I like forward, so, next, sort of.
Yeah, schedule it, next, two weeks. All those in favor? Okay, next is a discussion of ARPA funds and suggested uses. As I mentioned last night, we have had, we received a number of requests, and I've got a number of suggestions, but what I'd like to do is go over this a little bit, I just let folks know what, what, what requests we've had, what suggestions we've had, and some of, some thoughts that, that I have. And in the meanwhile, I'm working on a letter to send out to the community. With any suggestions that they, that might come from, to send them in, and, and with some background backup as to what that suggestion might be, and how that might benefit the community. And if, you know, as, as that is formulated, we can look at it and ask folks to, to get together and have a larger, larger conversation about what comes in formal. But as of right now, what we have is, you know, a million, around a million three for the next three and a half years. We have, in the bank now, we've got half of that. I've suggested, and we've discussed thus far, that a simple way to break it down is to say, let's spend 50% on capital, 25 on social services, 25 on economic recovery. Now, we can change that, that's just a suggestion that we've used thus far, we can do whatever we want to with this money, spend it all on capital if we want to, and we certainly have capital expenses that we could spend all on capital, but I don't think, and I think we all agree, that's not intended this month. So what we have committed thus far last night, we did $300,000 for, for the radius. What's been requested thus far is $48,140 from Pride Time Use Services over the next three years, I believe that's over the next three years, and that would come into social services. Yes, that is over the next three years, so, I think it's 20,000 for two years and 40, 22,000 for the last few years, and 4,000 for this year. What that money is contingent on, Essex and Chester have also gotten the same request, and that, this request, I think Essex may have already voted on it, and agreed to it, but contingent upon Chester, we prefer to make to the same thing. Chester is still, I think they're coming to a vote shortly. Shoreline Soup Kitchen has requested $10,000 from all the towns that they serve, one year, that's just, that's just a flat, flat request. That's to fund, to fund the refrigerator truck, what they, what they wanna do is have a refrigerator truck, so when they, they move food around from town to town, they can use that, sort of, to, to save. Middlesex Health Center for Behavior Health has asked for $15,500 for this year, they have not requested anything for an extended period. They, they're just a, an organization, not a middlesex hospital, treats, I think, last year, they had a meeting. That's another, that's against social services. Fire Department has various, various equipment that I think you guys might have, might not have seen that list, that totals to $120,000, that would obviously fall under capital. The River Cock Council of Governments that we want to actually, and this is a nice way to explain the money that Jane was asking about earlier. When, when the federal government sent out money to the states, it was intended, and most, most other states around the country, it was distributed to counties, and then the counties would distribute the money. Because Connecticut does not have county government, 50% of the money that was supposed to come to the town came to us, another 50% that was supposed to go to counties, also came to us. Because the River Cock acts as our county, certainly not our government, but our government behaves up, they are lobbyists of ARPA, they, they work, they, I think there are 13 or 19 towns that want the River Cock. They're not, they're not part of some, some are part of Middlesex County, some are part of, of New Haven, New London County, but it's, because they act as, they have requested of all of the, 15% of the county money, so that would be 15% of $630,000, which adds up to 95,000, and change. Again, that's the town, for the town to decide, for us to decide, for them to decide. Parks and Rec, we spoke about this, and it got through Board of Select and the Board of Finance, but it hasn't moved forward because the concept, the benefits changed a little bit. But they, they're still in the, in the request for $75,000 for the next three years for the music festival. Social services is, this is a suggested, and, and it's my request from me, I would like to put a full-time person over our social services office for the next three years, and I anticipate, just on the research that I've done, that would be somewhere between $170,000 and $195,000, that would be over the next three years.
And include salary and benefits?
Yeah. Suggested expenses, these are, just conversations from people around town who have not made a formal request, would be assistance to households for housing support, and for utility bill assistance through, that would be directed through our CHC or our, and or our social services. We also do, we do that already, but it's very limited with the monies that we have. Another would be money spent for household access to technology, I know there's, there's a lot of conversation about 5G, and I don't know the technology, or what's going on, but to, to get, to ensure that we have proper access to internet and to, to, around the whole of the town, not just, not just downtown or developed areas. Another is child, money towards childcare assistance, whether that's direct assistance to folks who need to support with their childcare, or assistance to either the existing or, or a new childcare facility. I know there's conversation, Boston Childcare over at the daycare center, or at the Baptist Church, I think that was called ABC, I don't know if you've heard of yours, and there's talk now that the Congregational Church might be closing that one too. I don't think that's run, I don't think that is the Congregational Church, but one that is run at the church, might, might be going, so, so try to find some way to support that, that's a huge need, that as people are going back to work as opposed to working out of the house, is going to be much more important. I'm not sure how this could work, but I'm, we're dealing with cybersecurity costs that are just skyrocketing, that we're seeing in our, in our budget, if we can use some of that money for that, I'd suggest with my mind to that. The Deep River Housing Authority and additional affordable housing, we could put some money towards that, maybe create some, some more affordable housing, that's, I don't think that we wanna build it, but we certainly help support any matching grants that the, that the housing authority might be able to get. And then, something close to my own heart is arts and arts organizations, and this was taken from another, another community, and what they're doing, and providing ser, any organization that provides service to Deep River residents, any community that had, at, or any organizations participated in Deep River for a long period of time. Any activity that results in increased tourist activity, or any arts and cultural activity that could provide a direct benefit to the recovery of other Clinton businesses, which I think that music, that music festival can work towards. So those are, those are thoughts, the requested monies are things that we could actually start to act on, if we're, if we're inclined, and if we, if we are so inclined, we can put this on a, on a, on another, on another agenda to review and to talk, and actually have the folks come in and explain them. I have some backup on most, on most all of these requests that I can distribute. But those are, those are conversations, that's, that's where, that's where I'm at with this, to get some feedback from you guys.
Pride Time Use Services, I think that's very, very important, I think the social service personnel, over the three years, that's very important. The Middlesex Health there, I don't know enough about that.
But we'll get some backup.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to hear, hear about that. Fire Department, we know about the Fire Department, Soup Kitchen, I think Soup Kitchen's, I like, well.
Yeah. I don't see any issues with, with any of them, I think that just everybody needs to be other, other than us three, I mean, the River Cock, I think that might be to the general public, they might not know what River Cock is.
Right.
And that they would need to be educated as to, you know, what they do to help the member of towns in, even thus, when they request money that is, it's a legitimate request for what they report.
Yeah.
But I don't think most people in town even knows what River Cock is.
I think that's a, that's right.
Yeah.
And it's, it is an important part of our government, they, they do a lot for us that goes unnoticed and unannounced, and they provide a lot of services for us, but they, they do, also, one of, one of the, one of the parts of this money is supposed to go towards regional projects. You know, it wouldn't just go to, to River Cock and to their coffers, it would be, if River Cock, well, right now, River Cock's been working on trying to find a digital copy or scanner, so that all of the files and all of the town halls in the region would be scanned into computers, so that it's accessible to the public online, as opposed to having to come to the office. Great idea, it's incredibly expensive, but if something like that were to come up, and, and they wanted some money for that, then we would say, okay, that's, that's, we can both, just support that or not. If they were doing a regional thing that only involved line, old line, and, and East and Haven, or East Haven, then that does nothing for us, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't get, but this is the percentage that they would like us to set aside for those regional type projects.
My only concern is just quick math off the top of my head, the seven action I'm gonna have here, that's six, give or take, 550, 600,000.
Yeah.
And we already spent 300, so that leaves us 350 left.
Yeah.
You know, it, it got a dump a lot of money. That would be my concern, that some of these other ones down below here, that how do we chop some of the top ones and feed some of the bottom ones who took?
Oh, that's, that's part of the big conversation, you know, this, this Fire Department request, that, that stuff that, that came from a, a conversation that said, hey, we've got some ARPA money, what do you guys want? What do you need, and what are you going to need over the next five years that would be in our regular general budget, and what do you need, what do you want, all that kind of thing.
I would like to feed a lot of mouths, not just a few.
Absolute, no, that's exactly where we're at.
Just how, how we chop it up and dice it up, and feed as many people as possible, that's what I would like.
You know, what's not in here is a contribution towards an ambulance, that'd be another 125. What's not in here is a new fire, I mean, police car, which is probably a year or two down the road, so. And there's, I think that's 25, 30, so.
Wood chipper.
Wood chipper, yeah, that should be in there, thank you for the money, so there's a lot, this is where, this is where we're at right now, you know, I'd like to, I'd want the conversation to keep going, like I said last night, it's only been a couple of months since the final guidance has been published, so now we know, we know what we can spend it for, I was, I was very afraid of spending some money and having to pay that. So now we know we can spend, and this is, these are.
One of the big cases, you was.
Yeah.
Disappropriated money, and I think it's proven to be taking the time.
Right. Same, so.
Yeah. So, you know, again, I'd ask you guys to chew on that for a couple of weeks, let's have some more conversations about it, and we'll, we'll start opening up some of this stuff. Looking at the clock, I think we're close to a, to the time that I don't have anything else for anybody to do, that's it. All those in favor? Thanks. Thank you, everybody.